The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
Excuse me, we educate all students to be college career and community ready, inspiring to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you, Celestine. Next is our open forum, a chance for members of the community to speak before the board on any topic of concern. Is there anyone who would like to speak before the board tonight? Seeing none, we will then move on to our roll call. Sandy?
Jeffries?
Here.
Dorf?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
Blacka?
Here.
Maloney?
Here.
Becker?
I think he's coming, so...
Martinez Cruz?
Here.
Sinclair?
Not here.
Alright, thank you. We are, six board members are present, I think Andrew is coming tonight. We're also joined at the table to my left by Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent. We have two intercity student council members, Luli Martinez and Grace Sinclair, right, and there it is, from Preble. And Luli is also, or is from East, sorry. And then also Sandy Heller, our board assistant. I would entertain a motion to approve the following minutes. We have a regular board meeting from June 15th, 2015. Special board meetings, June 22nd, June 26th, July 13th, 2015. Special board meetings, closed sessions, June 22nd, June 26th, July 13th, 2015.
So moved?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried 6-0. We have no communications to be placed on file this month. And then we will next move to our monitoring reports, and that will be facilitated by Mike Blacka.
Thank you, Brenda. Mark Smith is going to join us at the table. We have a two-part presentation tonight, lots of interesting information. In the first part, it deals with engagement, and then Mark is going to make a brief, give us a brief outline of what the presentation will be, and then introduce the three principals who will be talking about the various forms of engagement at their schools. And then I'll open it up for board members to ask questions, and then we'll move into the second part of our presentation tonight. So, go ahead, Mark.
Very good. You did a nice job of introducing it, I appreciate that. Members of the Board of Education, also the general public, we're excited to be here this evening. This begins our annual school monitoring reports presentations, and we appreciate the opportunity to come to the Board of Education, our general public, to explain what we're doing in the areas of school improvement at each of our schools. It's the first part of four sessions that we'll bring forward to Board of Education. We have eight schools that have provided you their narrative report in a board memo. We specifically pulled out one focus area, and that's around engagement, that the three principals will present on today as board member Blacka mentioned. We chose engagement because we think that engagement is critically important to the work that we do. There's several areas of engagement. They'll speak in general terms around parent engagement, student engagement, and the community from a greater whole perspective as well. Please also understand that this is a process, and that we will not, in the time that we have today, capture all of the school improvement efforts that the schools have participated in throughout the year. At the conclusion of the presentation, the other principals that are not the keynote speakers tonight would be available to answer any questions that you may have around their communication as well. So I'll go ahead and introduce the three principals that we have here today, and then we'll introduce the rest of them at that second phase. So Lori Ferk, the principal at East High School is joining us. Also Christine Fabian, the principal at Howe Elementary School. And Trina Lambert, the principal at Aldo Community School as well. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to them, and they can start the process.
We prepared just a short presentation for you tonight, and we'll be speaking during the slides as well.
Trina, if you could do me a favor, just speak into the mic because for our viewing audience...
We can probably lean in, is that better? I can hear you now. So tonight, we're really here to talk about what it means to have engagement and to be connected in terms of a community. And so we're each going to take some turns telling you a little bit about the efforts that are going on in our school right now. The first question we asked when we were sitting down together is, you know, why engagement? What's the point of engagement? And we know, research tells us, and our experience tells us, that when we pull families and communities together around our children, amazing things happen. And we see that in the school realm through increased achievement and school-friendly behaviors. We're defining engagement tonight as the degree to which someone is invested in the project or work that they're doing, the level of motivation that they bring to the work, and all with the goal, again, of increasing student achievement. Oh, sorry. Sorry, Christine.
And as we look at our ideas around student engagement, we really bulleted some pieces that in our conversations were really important to us at all grade levels, whether you're talking a student in PK, or whether you're talking a senior in high school. And as you can see in those bulleted points, there's some real core ideas around being safe, accepting, that willingness to get to know each other. It's grounded in social justice, and that we have that student voice present in our schools.
So with, when we were talking, we were looking at how teachers intentionally consider how to engage students in their learning process as they're going through the process day-to-day. And with those, under what conditions are students most likely to feel that they can be successful? What are students are most likely to become curious? And how can we help our students satisfy their natural drive towards self-expression? How can we motivate those students to learn by using the natural desire to create and foster good peer relationships? And when all those factors come together, we're looking at the coalition of the community, and using that voice from the community and trying to spread that voice, again, pre-K through 12. We were discussing many things that were happening between all three schools, and how all three schools are working with the community and working with one another to make that achievement happen for students, to engage them. To understand that if they went to Aldo, or if they went to Howe, that those students then would eventually end up being at East High, that they're going to be an East High school student and perform at East High School.
And then to piggyback on that and go a little further. When we sat down together, we were all quite excited about the variety of things that we offer for our students already. Some of them are listed on the slide. You know, certainly family nights are a great thing. This year, East High was kind enough to open up the opportunity for families at Aldo and East, and I think probably any of the feeder schools, to attend games, right? So basketball games, football games, and things like that, free of charge, so that they could come in and be welcome. And that was, we thought that was a real plus. And then certainly I will just speak to Aldo. The connection that we have at East with the foreign language program has been very, very positive, not only in helping students feel comfortable at East, but helping our students see what a larger community looks like and how they can function within that.
Also, a piece of that reciprocity, though, is those East High School students coming back into those elementary-level classrooms, and visiting, and being a part of volunteering to read to students, and working back into the younger grades as well.
And many of our students will, through our creative reading classes and so forth, go into some of the elementary schools and actually read their stories that they've created to the students and back and forth. The biggest piece that we've had for the summer, for the last two summers, is that East High School has opened its doors to Washington Middle School for summer school. And so the summer school runs at, for Washington Middle School, summer school runs at East High School for three sessions, for three weeks each for each of those sections. So we're trying to make the connection from the middle school to the high school, that the high school is not so scary. And when those students actually become ninth graders, they'll have pretty much the understanding of where things are in the building, and feel comfortable that when they come into the building at East High School, that they're still part of that.
They won't look for the pool.
Correct. No, we might still put that up there.
And to expand on those summer connections, at Howe this year, we piloted a CTE, or Career and Technical Education, summer school strand for our fourth and fifth grade students, where the middle-level and high-school-level Career and Technical Education teachers, fine arts areas, are teaching summer school, week-long summer school offerings for our students.
So again, to layer again, we know that just being welcoming to our students isn't enough, that we have to reach out further. And so one of the goals that our schools have is to make sure that we're removing barriers between home and school, so that we can, we can reach parents at any access point, find where they're comfortable where they are. And it was really interesting, as I was going through and brushing up on the research so I could be ready for tonight, I was reading the Southwest Educational Development Laboratory, we call it CDL, S-E-D-L, study. And guess what was mentioned in there? Howe School. Howe School was cited as a school that works really great in partnership and had strengths in reaching out to the community. And I believe, if I'm correct, that was 2010. So it's very recent data, and that was a national study. So it was wonderful to flip across that and see our own district reflected there.
As the next slide comes, you'll see our family connections. East High School tries to do curriculum fairs with our students to understand what is happening for choosing courses and so forth for the following school year. It's not only for the incoming ninth graders, but it's also for all the students that are still in our building, nine, 10, 11. We have family nights, we have freshman family nights. This year, our freshman family night, our welcoming family night, will be on the first day of registration. Instead of having a meal and so forth, we're actually just going to have ice cream. But then there will be three areas where parents and students will come in. And we'll actually give knowledge to our parents about IC, what happens at school, all these activities and so forth, and try to make those connections. We try very hard to do our parent leadership. We do parent lunches at East High School. I'll change those around just slightly. I do believe what I need to do is bring in some of our elective areas to kind of show our parents what is going on. One of the things I found out this year is that I visited our tech ed wing when we were starting to do the automotive, the city stadium automotive. One of my parents said, "I wish I would have known that, you know, the auto ownership, that my daughter would take it, and every daughter should take that, because then they would know how to buy a car, how to get insurance and so forth." They have no clue why those courses are where they are. And although their daughter is probably going to be ending up being a scientist, wherever it may be, there's some, there's some pieces in those other areas that they would like their kids to go to. So with those parent luncheons, I want to open it up and let our CTE areas and so forth show and showcase what they have to offer.
We also have a vast number of community connections where, in all three of our buildings, we open the doors and create connections with multiple community groups, community agencies, that you can see just a few of the examples that we have pulled together and listed up there. And these are examples in which we really help students get involved in their community, but that we also want to focus on some of those essential areas of non-academic development as well.
I try and really to open the doors, and one of the fourth bullet, remind yourself, is August 5th if you'd like to volunteer for the back-to-school store. That's where 1,500 students in Brown County will actually, from K through 5, receive their new clothes for the first day of school, their backpacks and so forth. So it's something that we've opened up and have actually cherished, that partnership with the Service League and processing. In fact, even at this point in time, they're delivering items, and our middle school students, our summer school students, are actually volunteering and helping unload and so forth, and they're just, they're just thrilled with the impact that the students are having in their own lives as they're seeing this evolve. And then there's more, as we're going through, the Bellon Run, the Selcom Run, City Stadium Run, as we're going through. We have City Stadium Automotive, so there's many, many relationships that we're trying to connect with the community, and show, not only for the high school, but also for the K-8 and the K through 5.
And the last piece I'd just like to offer about the community partnerships is that, you know, as we mentioned earlier about that intention, when we go and we seek to have community partners, whether it's a small, more informal situation, or whether it's a large-scale, long-term commitment, we're really looking for that mutual benefit. So what does the, what does the agency need to do, right? What's its mission? And how can our students benefit from it, right? And if it doesn't, if it's not a good fit for our students, then we have to say no. Or we have to spend time at the table deciding and defining something that will work for both agencies. The time with our children is just too important to not make sure that our needs are being met, that those students are getting that support that they need, and having access to things that will benefit them.
Thinking conclusion, if I could just offer the comment that, for our first presentation, we tried to be intentional about a thematic approach, as you noticed, how Aldo, feeder schools into East High School. And that equated to how they co-constructed the presentation. So we appreciate your patience in some of the transitions and making sure that we were able to capture that. But we wanted it to be about a K-12 alignment perspective. And I challenged the three of them to co-construct the presentation as compared to just doing individual pockets of how do we engage people. So they did a really nice job with that. Go ahead and turn it over to the board if you have questions specifically about engagement.
Yeah, Mark, let me start out with a question for you, and I think the rest of us are very impressed by the cooperation between East and its feeder schools. Does the same thing exist in our other three quadrants?
I think one of the benefits of once having that quadrant structure was that culture that was established, and that acknowledgement that we do need to work collectively. As a former middle school principal, we often looked at transition in and transition out. And I think, you know, fifth graders becoming sixth graders, eighth graders becoming ninth graders. So I do believe that there's a lot of intentionality towards that. Summer school is one really good example of how that's coming to fruition, and we can see that today.
Yeah, I mean, I think these presentations are important in themselves, but I think they're important if the information here to be shared with other schools that aren't here. If there's some good ideas in the East quadrant, that certainly should be shared with our other quadrants. So I think that should be an ongoing professional development piece, I think that, I think we're all interested in. So with that, I'll open it up to the rest of the board for questions, comments. Anyone? Chris?
Thank you, not a question, a couple of comments that I made. I appreciate what you're doing with engagement, and I think we all know if we don't get our kids vested in schools, you know, they just don't do what they could be doing. Likewise, we need our parents to support what we're doing. And obviously, beyond that, the community, and you've talked about those three. I would hope as time goes on, and maybe it's there, and I'm not aware of it right now, but I think this sort of thing, and it's sort of piggybacks into Mike's comment, we need to institutionalize this somehow, so it's not something that, you know, okay, if we could do this now, and maybe something else later on, something else later on. But all, in my opinion, now, almost on a calendar basis, we make sure we fit these things in our calendar, the engagement with the community and the parents. So it's, it's not like an also, and I'm not saying it is an also for you folks. But I think we need to go that step further. And if I may, I know, or some of my colleagues in the board and their superintendent have had a lot of contact with legislators. I think we're going to have to bring, in my opinion, have to bring that down to the building level, where they get in there when kids are actually there, not before-school, after-school meetings, but as often as we possibly can, or make that push come to shove, that they come in there. My thinking is, the more they know, the better prepared they are when they work on the budget and other items.
We do have a couple of our area legislators who are very good at visiting our schools. So, but we need to get them all engaged, so that certainly is a good point. Michelle?
I have a couple of questions. As you talked about the various activities, how did you determine what was needed to bring and engage people in? And in there, you also spoke about removing barriers. How do you know what the barriers are?
Well, I can tell you that the way that Aldo approaches engagement is really based on a logic model from community schools. And so we, we know that if we follow the model, we have a really good chance of reaching our goals of increasing student achievement, and having kids have those, you know, those good citizen, great neighbor kind of skills that we want them to have. And I think eliminating the barriers, and I think this would be true across all of our schools, but certainly, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's about, we, we all take the opportunity to get personal with our families, right? Those, knowing those names, knowing those faces, knowing the stories, all matter. And we all have different resources and people that we rely on to help do that outreach for us. But, but, systems work great until they don't, and then you have to have something underneath. And I think that's what makes the difference, especially when you walk in the buildings and you feel that. It's because that, that we've taken the time to figure out what that barrier is. And we don't get it right all the time, but we're certainly open.
Go ahead.
If I can follow up. So, so are you asking parents? I think Lori, you said something really important, that you're going to do some, you all said very important things, please know that. And I appreciated the presentation. But as you think about, and you made the decision that you would have an educational component of your parent night, what was the impetus behind that, and what told you that this is something important that wasn't being done, that we should do?
I think more often than not, when we're finding out with the incoming freshman night, most of our parents will ask, "Well, I had no clue that ICU was available," or, "Well, I didn't realize that football started August 1st." So we're trying to open those events out and up to people for their knowledge. We're trying to do the best job that we can by asking questions and trying to make those questions, actually get those questions answered. To be very honest, I think the one thing I'm lacking at is asking my students. And Ruby can contest to this, I do ask the students almost every day in the hallways and so forth, but that's not, that's not enough. And so then, I've also been looking at, how do I ask my students in a proper manner as we're going forward? So I'm looking at taking someone from each one of the activities and having a better feel of what is really happening at East High School. This past year, to be honest, I didn't survey my staff the year before I did survey. And I need to continue to do that, because I have to open up and ask questions, and not be afraid of some of the answers that actually come. And I think our parents are understanding that they can ask me some of those tough questions, and if I don't know the answers, I will come up with those answers or come up with some solution. I guess, give you an example of what was happening last week, I ended up going to lunch at Old Chicago. I just kind of decided to go to lunch that day. I walked through the door, and all I hear is, "Mrs. Ferk, how are you?" And a waitress comes up and hugs me in the middle of the restaurant. And of course, it's one of our East students from a year before, that graduated, and was just thrilled to see me, and then made sure she gave me a hug before I left. Those are things that you commit to. I find parents everywhere I go, and I just talk to them. It took me two hours to get out of one of the stores. And my father called me and said, "Why were you taking so long?" But I ran into at least three different parents, and I took the time and opportunity at that point to talk to them. So not closing off those pieces, and opening it up, walking, walking the neighborhood as much as possible.
Because I would like to ask all three of you, I assume there is a direct correlation between students who are involved and engaged in schools and parents who are engaged and involved in school. So how do you reach those students and those parents who aren't engaged and involved?
One of the, one of the things that we learned, and I was going to piggyback a little bit off of Lori. This year, we had made a connection between Howe School and East High School, and opening up the opportunity for our families and our students to go to a football game and a basketball game at no cost. And we advertised, you know, we advertised that, we had kids that got to be the water boys, water girls at the games, that kind of thing. So we had built that connection. Where that connection came from was actually in conversations with our students, who really weren't seeing the connection to what school they were going to in the future. And so for us at the elementary level, we were like, wait a minute. We want our kids to know where's their middle school, where's their high school. And so that was what started that dialogue between, how do we make that, how do we make that happen? And so that's where that particular opportunity came from. And so by doing that, we opened the door for families who maybe have never set foot in East High School. And some of the feedback that we got back from our parents was actually really interesting. Uh, excuse me, I need to drink water. One of our moms had commented that she had never been to a football game, ever, and had never had an opportunity to take her children to any type of sporting event. That was powerful.
Katie?
I think, I love the collaboration. And I think you've got, I mean, Aldo, you've got the queen of parental participation. But they're all, I mean, by virtue of, when Aldo started, there was a lot of parent, and that was the, that was the expectation. I think how you have a totally different story, but you can engage people, meet them where they are. And I think the opportunities, and I think the dinners that you have, I mean, the old adage, if you feed them, they will come. And they do. And I think the cooperation between a lot of the East faculty, you know, Mark Strohschrein has been very instrumental in the Howe Community Garden, just doing, helping donating plants and telling them what not to plant.
Well, and Mark was one of, and was one of the CTE teachers that came and spent a week.
And I think that communication is critical. I know when you first started at Howe, Christine, you walked the neighborhood.
I still do, in the summer.
To, you know, get to know who's out there. So I applaud your collaboration.
Any other question? Couple of things. I'd like the principals to talk about their belief in social justice and how that's reflected in how you operate.
At Aldo, we define social justice as being better because you're at the table. So the gifts and the challenges that you bring make our community better. And so we really start at the earliest age with that idea of acceptance, and looking for the pieces that other people bring to our school, to our table. I think from there, it really is strengthened by that idea of developing their voice and honoring that voice. When you give students voice, they use it, and sometimes the challenging part isn't, isn't to get the voice. The challenging part is to honor that voice when it's been used appropriately, right? How do you, how do you reflect their needs, their wants, their desires within your school community, and still do all the things you need to get done? And so for us, it's central to the work that we do. As the students get older, you know, it comes into play more of being of service to others. One thing that we really value is being able to give back. So once we feel that we've got something, we've got a handle on something, our next task is to give that back somehow, whether it's to someone sitting next to us, or a more formal project within the school, or even out in the community, or helping someone at home, right? We celebrate those moments, and I think that that instills that idea that we don't have to be the same or good in the same things. We just have to know each other well enough to know what our strengths are, and to accept our challenges.
Anyone else?
I think we also build on that with some of the existing structures that we have in place, whether it be PBIS, CHAMPs, restorative practices, in giving our students the opportunity to understand from little on, what are those social behaviors that we need you to be able to engage productively in, so that...
in so that they can have that willingness to accept, so that they can have that larger social picture and that larger social justice thought process. Those are behaviors that we have to sometimes help them gain those skills in. And so, in our schools, we do have those PBIS structures, those CHAMPs, the use of restorative justice practices in terms of helping them through those difficult situations with some of the peer mediation pieces and, and restoring the harm. How do I fix it if I did it wrong?
I guess we're the model school as we're going through. And when you look at our building, and we're 60% minority now, it's a very interesting walk in the halls because everybody enjoys everybody. Hey, I don't see people talking about anyone else and so forth. You're still going to have some of those disagreements with human nature. It just is. But when you see our administrative staff and when you see our, our regular staff, whether it be our teachers, our monitors, our paras and so forth, they're very respectful to students, both whether they're behaving or not behaving. We're trying to keep that justice, that social justice of being respectful to one another. If I'm going to work with a student that's actually misbehaving, I'm not going to sit and raise my voice and scream at the student because that's not the behavior I want that student to portray. I want that student to be some, in a different state and calm down. And then, by their calming down and so forth, then the social justice actually kicks in and they start understanding what the other person is feeling like. I mean, they're anywhere from 14 to 21 in our building. And you have to, you have to try to work with them in an adult manner to get them to change so that they can be our community members as we're moving forward. But if you come and walk the walk for a day, you would get that same feeling, that welcoming feeling. In fact, again, last week, when Todd Chandler, who is the AP at, at Washington, wanted to come up to me and thank me very much for allowing him to be in the building with the, the middle school students, he said, your building is so welcoming. Your, your teachers, your, your staff and your students are just wonderful and empowering. And he was just one, he just enjoyed being there for the time that he was. So, you, you see that constantly. We had parents come today. You gave us more information than another school. This is the most information I've ever had. So, there are things that we're showing in that manner of speaking, but trying to portray our students in that next mode of their life and trying to get them to be what your mission statement is and what our missions and statements is, is to be career, community, college career and community ready as we're moving forward. And really, a big part is the community. These students are going to be our community. They're who we're here for.
Do leaders have any comments like, yeah?
As a student, I am now a senior at East. It's an interesting conversation listening to you guys because I did actually come, like you see, growing from elementary school to middle school to East, all this engagements that you guys are talking about, we're talking about, that I remember my seventh grade year at Washington, my seventh year I was there and they took us to East to sit at the band. And I still remember like, to this day, like, when I, when I have band, I like sit in the place, like this is where I remember sitting in the spot. Like, and now it's me sitting here years after, like, just, and then, um, summer school, you see all these kids just coming in from schools. You see little kids to middle schoolers walking around the hallways. And you're just like, these kids are going to be going here and they're like the future. So, it's just thinking back to what I did when I was at Washington and coming from Doty to Wa, to Washington to, to East. So, it's just interesting that the community and all the things that East does to have all these kids coming into East. And it's interesting.
I'm only a sophomore at Preble, so I haven't been in high school for very long. But I do know that, I went to Red Smith K through eight. And being at that one school my whole life, changing schools was going to be so scary because I had never had the opportunity to have that dramatic change from one school to another. But I know that we went to Preble on a school day and we toured the, like, we toured the building and the students were there and it was like a normal day. And I remember I was so terrified before we did that. And then, after we did that, I didn't even know why I was scared. And really, like, having that engagement throughout the schools helped me so much for transferring to that school because, you know, I had never done that before and it was so scary to me. But then, once we did that, I felt ready for high school. I felt at ease.
Now, I don't want to put the two of you on the spot, but is there anything that you wish your school would do regarding student engagement that you think they're not doing or not doing enough of?
I'll go first. For, like, my principal, Ms. Ferk, said, she mentioned that she wanted more engagement from the students and she wanted to hear from the students. I recently got soccer captain for my senior year and my coach mentioned that we should get together and tell her what's happening in the teams and stuff. And that just gave me an idea. As student body president at East as well, I thought it'd be a good idea just to, you know, sit with the principal and just talk. And I do have different aspects of the school involved in band and all of the sports, in the sports I'm in and stuff. So, it's just, like you said, something that would be better, would be just so we could talk. And just an idea that our coach gave us. And I just thought that'd be interesting, you know, just sitting together. And I'm sure she does that with her students because as students council, that, that's what they're going to do next year, but just different sports.
You can find out how much of the Women's World Cup she watched.
I got a few games. I had to, I had to coach soccer myself, so.
I know at Preble, I'm also like really involved in several different, I'm involved in the music and I'm involved in the sports. And I'm also involved in student council. And I know that, that not everyone knows about what's going on. And I don't think our, I don't think our principal knows much about what's going, like, she obviously is very good at her job. She knows what's going on. But, um, like, when we're going to competitions for show choir, nobody knows that our show choir does a competition. Nobody knows what that is.
I've been there.
And I think it, I think it's just more of the awareness. I don't think students are aware of what's, what their opportunities are at school. And I know that, like, I ran for student council and then I'm student body vice president for the sophomore class. And most of my friends didn't even know how to go, how to apply for student council. They wanted to be on it, but they didn't know. They weren't aware of it. And so, I think the awareness is more.
Communication.
Yeah. Wonderful. Thank you for those comments. Anyone else, Len or Katie?
Good question. Turn it over. And if you don't have the numbers, that's okay. About how many of your graduating eighth graders are going out to East?
The majority of them are going out to East.
A clear majority of them.
It, over the years, it kind of waxes. It's always a majority, but it kind of waxes and wanes at the, at the percentage size. This year, we have quite a few heading over.
The thing that actually has improved immensely is because of the French and Spanish programs that we have for our seventh and eighth graders. So, they do come to East High School for those full, full classes. And then, we fill up their schedule if we can. So, if they have to be there for first and second hour, they are. And they're part of the family, in the East family. And that's, that's the way it is. And they, and we go through those days. It's interesting when I say good morning to them in the morning and they're kind of huddled in a corner because they act like middle schoolers, just like middle schoolers do that kind of. Yeah. So, then they're afraid, like, why is someone talking to them? But that transition of having them there, seventh and eighth grade, that's the piece that actually gets them to come to East High School.
Anything else from any other board members? Before we, you three principals leave, I'd like to add a shout out for the Back School Store, August 5th, East High School, starting at 7:30 in the morning. If anyone has ever shopped with one of these young children and to see their eyes light up when they get to pick out their pants and their shirt and their books and to fill up their backpack with all the school supplies. And remember one young boy saying, what you mean? I get to keep all this. So, that's a, it's a great day. I think it's a, my first year on the board has started at Fort Howard School at Alcu Fort Howard. It went to Franklin, I think at Alcu Franklin. Now, it's been at East for three, four, five years. And I think it's, it's a reflection of some of the great partnerships we have with our business partners and all the donations of clothing and school supplies. But I think it's also a reflection of the growing poverty in our community, which, which is a troubling and a concerning issue. But it's a, it's a wonderful day at East High School. So, if anyone has a spare day or a couple of hours, I recommend it highly. So, thank you very much. And then Mark, I think, is going to introduce the other principals here. And I think the board has gotten reports from the other principals as well. But thank you so much.
I told them to, I told them to stay and treat us already out of that. But, no, that's okay. That's right. You didn't get the message.
Is that independent spirit that goes on Aldo?
Our, our hope was that you, you gained a little insight around the engagement efforts and certainly recognize that it's a work in process. It's not complete in that we continually work to engage all stakeholders. And one of the pieces that I so appreciate from this group, but also from, really for that matter, all of our principals, is that they see it as an opportunity, not as a deficit. And they want parents, students, community to feel welcome in their buildings. And how they assess that and go through that process is really an art. And it, it shines through. So, anybody out there in the public, I would encourage you to, to call up to principal. They would, they would enjoy that. We have an opportunity at this point to ask any questions that you have around school monitoring reports. I'll go ahead and introduce the principals that are here as well. We have, as, as you mentioned, the three principals here that also submitted their, their board memo, memo. Michelle Moten, principal from Jefferson Elementary is, is here as well. Thank you, Michelle, for being here. Matt Heller, who is the new principal at Nicolay Elementary School, is, is here as well. Erin Manders, the principal at Kennedy, is here. And then, we also received reports from Kelly Rollins, the principal at McCullough, who is unfortunately not able to be here, as well as Carrie Shepherd, the principal at Martin Elementary School, who is unable to be here. So, turn it over to the board if there's any questions or comments.
Any questions on the monitoring reports? And I know there was a lot to digest over the weekend of reports. So, I guess my suggestion would be is if board members have more time to look through those, if you have any questions, afford them to Mark. And then, when periodically Mark and Celeste and I get together, then we can talk about that. And also, well, Mark's going to talk a little bit about what's next month. But he always welcomes any, any comments from board members, suggestions on, on how the thing is progressing. And then, Mark will share them with, with Celeste and me the next time we meet. Brenda?
I just have a couple of questions because I don't know what vocabulary is. And these are mainly in the appendices. And they're in multiple schools reports. So, whoever wants to answer is fine. One of them is the, and this was specifically in Christine, your report, but it's in others again. But it's the projected scale score on the STAR math assessment. And I'm just curious if that's a, when you, when you say it's a projected score, is it projected based on their incoming test results or on their grade level and, and where they should be?
Great question. On that, on those STAR reports, when a student takes that report or takes the STAR assessment in fall, they receive a scale score. And then, that scale score is compared to all the other students who received that score across the country. And then, they make a projected score of where you would like them to be, or where you would like them to get. That's what that projected scale score is.
So, it is based on their initial...
Yes. It's based on, it's individual, yes. It's individual to each student who takes that.
All right. And then, the other one is a reference, and I just grabbed this out of Nicolay's, but again, it's in multiples, multiple schools. It says, the greater than 50% growth STAR measure.
So, I guess I can answer that. This is, a lot of this language is new to me too. I'm from New Chicago. So, we're talking about a different testing setup than we used to, although it was similar. So, you're taking a student's incoming score and then comparing that against all the students in the nation that came in at that same score. And if you could bring that student to at least the 50th percentile next year, you exceeded growth to the 51st percentile, you exceeded the national norms for that particular student. So, you're comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges. You're comparing, I'm just making numbers up. A student coming in with a 150, you're looking at how all the other students in the United States do at 150. So, you're comparing basically the ability of your school to that same student at that same level by that next year. But you bring them to about the 50th percentile, to the 51st percentile, you exceeded national growth norms for that student. So, you're getting better than average slightly. That makes sense.
And the 50% growth is different for different students? It depends, depends on their initial score?
A lower scoring student, you expect to grow a lot more because they have a lot more to grow. A student who's already in the 90th percentile, they're not going to grow that much in terms of, you know, numerical number because they're all going to be very high scores.
Okay. But those, so their 50th percentile growth is much smaller than the more...
Exactly.
Yes. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Any other questions? Chris?
Comment if I may. I do appreciate having all this information ahead of time. I did have an opportunity to read it yesterday. And there's nothing really jumped out at me that I have to ask or need a question on. I do like it where you have bar charts. That's, it's helpful to me than just straight numbers. And I like it when reports that have the number, the actual numbers to of students involved. I did see, and one of them though, where, had attendance, percentage of attendance, and only went back three years. And you don't have to answer the question. No, I don't because I don't remember where it was. It may have been in East. I'm not sure. Why only three years? I would think you'd had attendance data longer than that. It's what the trend might be. Three years doesn't make a trend. So, I was just coming in there.
I can answer that. Basically, the three-year trend is what we're having, is when we started doing the new student success plan as we're, as we're moving forward, we've looked through the trend for, we went back to the attendance rate in 2012, 13. Prior to that, I think we were actually representing it differently on IC. So, these are actually matching pieces. And then, we're also looking at, if you notice ours, if, you probably have it on Google Docs as we're going through. Ours, we also color coordinated because we'd like to see it as a trend of that cohort group moving forward. And so, when you're looking at graduation rate, what typically happens, and you know, as you, being a high school principal and so forth, students don't really drop out in their freshman year, nor their sophomore year. After their sophomore year, if they get so far behind in credits, then they just fatally leave. So, you see a big drop off in the 11th grade. So, we're looking at the trends of trying to keep the numbers at a higher percent for attendance rate, which then would mean hopefully that you'll see a different cohort of numbers for graduation rate. And that's also a part of, it's kind of a connected piece for us. What I'd like to say is that my appendix B, I'd like to update if I can.
Just got new fresh data that she just calculated this morning.
But I did. I know. The reason is, is the Algebra I passing and the ELA nine passing, those are college gatekeepers. And those are pieces that we need to see. Those are percents of students that are passing both semesters and that are on target for graduation based on what's happened. Last year, we started doing completion in summer. So, any students that had passed one semester but had not passed the second semester and had a 50% or higher, we brought them into summer school to do completion and provide that completion packet. What the teacher valued to be completed, we've done that again this year. And so, our percentages have actually rose from what's on there, at least by 3% in each area so far because summer school basically initially closed last Friday. Our pieces are to keep them motivated, keep them with their credit load in the core areas, keep them energized to say, I can complete it. And that you'll see the attendance trend change once they hit that 11th grade year.
If I could just articulate that a little bit, because this has been consistent at the high school levels. And I think as you get the other high school reports to come in, it might be good context. The high school principals and the staff have really been interested in this, the concept of continuous progress monitoring or continuous progress growth. Meaning, if we are assessing students based upon standards and maybe a student failed a course because they didn't complete mastery in all areas, if we extend the time that they have opportunity to complete mastery, they're still proficient. So, what they've taken is the summer to extend that time period. And students have been able to demonstrate mastery, which keeps that door of opportunity alive for the students. And that's the connection that Lori was making, that once kids see them as credit deficient, where's the hope? And we want to keep that door of opportunity alive for those, for those students. So, that's really what she's attempting to articulate there.
Michelle? Or Chris, are you done? Did you have another?
Do you mind if I just piggyback on this?
No, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate you saying that and doing that because otherwise, none of us want to take something all over again because we missed one or two small parts. And that's what has happened to so many kids. And that puts me further behind because they can't take... can't take the next level of classes. So thank you.
With that, with that, if you read the cultural shift that's been with our staff members, that's been a difficult task, to be very honest, because people want it done in this right amount of time. And so what I keep telling my teachers is that some students can't do it in 18 weeks. Some of them need 20. And that's okay. And then I also have to ask them that they get their driver's license the first time through also because, you know, if you flunk your driver's test the first time, shouldn't you take drivers out all over again? It doesn't happen, but you have to take the test over again. So that's all we're asking is, is same as getting your driver's license. They didn't pass it at that point in time, let's get them to that proficiency level, let's move them forward and let's get them going into that. Many of the students were just amazed that that's, that that could happen and were thrilled and have not gone back to summer school because of that.
East has a long history of grading practices, as you guys know, but that's another indication of the work that we've done through InterCity Student Council on the grading task force and grading practices that's now starting to permeate to many of our secondary buildings. So kudos to you guys.
Michelle?
I just wanted to clarify in regard to Dr. Wagner's and support what Lori said. When we switch from Zangle to IC, there were some significant problems in terms of transitioning the data. And we cleaned that up. And I know I'm thinking and looking at Mr. Dor, Barbador was very helpful in making sure that happened as part of the students' pupil services because it was way off. And so I'm not sure we have accurate data during that transition time. At one point, we had students about 50% truancy going on in all our schools. Nothing was making sense. So that's all been cleared up and that's probably why we want to have accurate data. But I, as, as we look to these reports, what I really appreciated seeing is some hard data that tells you where improvements are being made and, and putting it out there and saying, here's our reality and here's how we're willing to work forward and around growth and improvement for our students. So thank you for that.
All right. Anything else from the board? Mark, do you want to talk a little bit about what we're facing next month?
Yep. We'd like to have presentation that focuses on early literacy. So we have some of our early sites. So the ELC would be part of participating in that head start. The presentation itself will be on literacy, in particular, early literacy. And then we have another schedule of school monitoring reports to be presented like we did today. I believe there's about nine that are in that cohort of schools that will be presenting as well.
All right. And I would like to thank all of our principals for being here this evening. And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you're not required to.
Nice day. Get out there.
Run with the wind.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation.
You are staying, right?
I wanted to go cut the lawn, but I wasn't going to.
It's too hot in the ride.
That's right. Brenda, I have a request to take, to reorder the agenda. To take item, I must scroll down. Give me a moment. Keep giving me a moment. Okay. 13B2A1. 2A1. So the Employment Administrative Staff, recommend a motion. Julie LaBerge. To take that, I would say after the superintendent's report. Now I have to scroll back up again. Sorry. So after the superintendent's update and before the calendar.
We have to, is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion. Reorder the agenda.
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Lecca?
Aye.
So remind me, it's in between superintendent's?
And the calendar.
Oh.
That's part of her report, though.
That's her report.
Oh, the calendars, yeah. So let's do it now.
Before the, oh, right now. I don't have to remember. That works.
There you go.
Right. So that would be Chris making the motion.
Yes. Yes, that's right. That's the one. Yeah. Yeah, now, you're on.
Thank you. I am pleased to recommend that the employment of Julie LaBerge as an Associate Director of Special Education, 12 months at the district office, has a salary of $100,070, prorated Group 9, 98th percentile contingent upon pre-employment effective at a mutually agreed-upon start date as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy? Lecca?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Dorf?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Carrot60, welcome.
Now we can welcome you.
Welcome.
You can stay, too, if you want.
But you've now been given permission to go enjoy the outside.
Outside.
We were very excited to get Julie on board.
Would you come up?
Come on up.
She comes to us with, Julie comes to us 19 years as a district director of special education at Bondewell. She's well-known across the state and the whole Midwest for her publications or speaking and her knowledge base in the area of special education. So we're very, very pleased to have her on and excited to move forward with Julie.
Great. Very good. Thank you very much. Welcome. Thank you.
All right. Now we'll go back to our agenda and next up is the superintendent's update.
Very good. Thank you. We're going to first begin with the calendar and it's a, it's a brief calendar. August is a, is a short month for us in terms of meetings, so we're going to be adding some soon, hopefully. August 3rd, teaching and learning is our, and it's early, is our work session meeting beginning at 5:30. And immediately following that, on August 3rd, we will have the organizational support work session meeting right here in the boards room, in room 331. Then on August 17th is our regular board meeting beginning at 5:30. And September 1st, we'll be inviting and welcoming back our students for the first day of school for our students. So that is the calendar coming up. And so then it takes me to the next item, which may take a little more than five minutes. It always has in the past. A request for a retreat in August. We talked about some issues around teaching and learning, not issues, some opportunities around teaching and learning and scheduling.
Should we start with the Mondays in August?
10th, I'm not available.
Motetown. 24th?
Won't be here. I will be on the 17th or the 24th.
Okay.
So you'll be here for the board meeting? I will not be here. I'll be here the 3rd. I think I have to be out.
Do we have to do it on a Monday? I know it was, it was because of Mary's schedule.
Well, I just know that's when Andrew keeps the schedule open, but he, I think, can be somewhat flexible. How soon, Michelle?
Anytime during the month of August would be fine.
I mean, we could look at, you know, another night of the week.
Sandy, we had talked about a Tuesday, didn't we?
Tuesday, the 4th?
Tuesday, the 4th?
The 18th?
Motetown, 4th and 5th.
The 18th?
What's not good for you?
First week of August is probably not good.
How do people feel about the 18th?
They're expecting a Thursday and a Thursday.
You're not here on the 18th? Oh, yeah. I mean, feel free to have it.
We might not get everybody.
Right. Is there, when are you here? You've gone two weeks, right? The last? I, I have some things to do. I'm here the first two weeks of August and not the last two weeks of August, but those first two weeks are kind of packed. Packed already, so.
I mean, is the 31st?
Yeah, no.
It's the day before school.
That, that's out.
Yeah, that, that would be tough.
Does it have to be in the evening or could it be first thing in the morning? I don't have a sense how long.
Absolutely, it could be first thing in the morning.
I don't know what time is Andrew.
Then that means that I cannot do it Monday or Tuesday. But like I said, the first week of.
Michelle, what are you thinking, two hours?
Yeah.
I think you should go ahead and skip. People feel about July 30th? Is that too soon?
I, I.
I'm not, you're on.
Don't worry. I have, we have a baby, you know, grandchild expected about that time, so I can't commit.
I understand.
I have committed, but I can't commit.
To not to this.
All right.
Should we go back to the 18th?
18th. And we could, we could do it from, in the morning.
I don't know how good that is for Andrew.
Okay. Or we could do it in the afternoon or evening.
Andrew can be here usually.
So you tell us.
Five?
By 5:00?
He can usually do 5:00, I think.
He can usually do by 5:00, yeah.
And then I'm thinking, I don't know if you have a meeting with Mark? If you and Mike have a meeting with Mark?
We don't have one scheduled.
No, not scheduled, not.
But we can circle back if you're not able to attend.
Okay.
That we can catch you up to speed and get your feedback.
Six, two hours?
So we're looking at the 18th? That's fine, yeah. I'll be sure to.
18th, 5:00.
Contact Mark and.
And then Sandy, you'll check with Andrew?
I'm not going to be here. And I'll be enjoying myself.
If we don't hear, we'll assume it's at 5:00.
Jersey Shore.
On the Jersey Shore eating seafood.
Jersey Shore.
I'll be eating seafood, yes.
With Chris Christie.
Did you?
No.
I thought.
I'm meeting on 18th.
You could check.
We're meeting the night before, though.
Yeah, I'd rather do the 5:00.
Does that work?
Yeah, I think morning may be a problem for Andrew.
Yeah, because two hours, he.
Yeah.
That's, and that morning, I wouldn't be available for two hours. Unless we start at 6:00. Which would be pretty. I've seen some of you at 6:00. Good. That's not good.
All right, yeah, just make sure, check with Andrew and let me know if he can't come, but hopefully that'll be working him.
Okay. That was really good. And the last thing I have is a success story that I want to share. It's actually an email that both Kim Paulo and I received from a student. And he writes to us and because I've not gotten permission from him to share his name, I'm not going to do that, but I think it's a very powerful email and I want to share that. I'm writing this email to extend a thank you to yourselves, the school board and the entire Green Bay public school system. I truly believe that it is because of the Green Bay school district and its dedicated teachers that I have been afforded the opportunity to pursue my dream of attending business school. I have been fortunate enough to be one of 120 freshmen directly admitted to the Wisconsin School of Business. I was also selected as one of two students from Wisconsin to receive a full academic scholarship to the Wisconsin School of Business at UW-Madison. I am indebted to the entire Green Bay area public school district as I feel that my scholarship and admittance to the Wisconsin School of Business is a shared accomplishment. I am a true product of the Green Bay public school system and have attended public schools since I was in kindergarten at MacArthur Elementary. I also attended Lombardi Middle School and just recently graduated from Southwest High School. Throughout my academic career, I have had amazing teachers and administrators that have molded me into the learner I am today. They have pushed me to be the best I can be. I have always been astounded at the level of teaching in the district and have nothing but positive things to say about my public school education. We live in a time where public schools are constantly being attacked for having, and I quote, lazy teachers and inadequate schools. I feel my story proves the opposite. Our district is one that fosters intellectual vitality and is always trying to advance the needs of our students. Once again, I would like to thank both of you and the entire district for making my educational experience a phenomenal one. I have met many amazing people on the journey that have helped me be the student and the man I am today. I am very grateful for everything the district has done for me with gratitude.
Very nice.
It's very well written, I thought.
Such a well written.
Yes. I thought he could be the next Mark King. Multi-millionaires.
I, I definitely appreciate that. I'm sure we'll get back to that student.
I have.
And in my mind, it'd be wonderful if a person, that student, be willing to send it into, send it into the newspaper.
I can ask him. I'm sure he would. So, perfect. We'll do. Excuse me. If I could offer, the other thing I think that Ms. Ferk said is very important is we need feedback from students. And I think so often, we don't hear what's working well. And so one of the things as we worked forward to collect institutional data in our schools is to really ask students for more information as well as our parents to find out what is working well and what else needs to be improved upon. So, and that was just a great email and of course, I cried, so it was good. Made my day.
All right. Thank you. And next.
That concludes it.
Our legal update, we have no legal updates. I just want to remind board members that if there's ever some legal question you have or something and you would like to have Melissa prepare an update for a board meeting, to just let me know and I'll pass that on to her. And then next is our InterCity Student Council report and I'll turn that over to Billy.
Good evening. We are almost getting through halfway out of our summer in our district and we still continue to do great things throughout our district. Grace here will start off with some of the good news that has been happening ahead of schools.
I believe for all of the high schools that the second summer school session has started today. And also throughout the district, many high schools have opened gyms for different sports as many students are preparing for the fall sports. These are some of the awesome things that our high schools have been doing. For Southwest, the Lady Trojans soccer team won state runner-up. And the dance team is getting a great start with a bake sale for the upcoming year. For Preble, the football team got cleats, gloves and other football stuff donated by the Green Bay Packers to start off their season. And Preble also won a culinary challenge against Pulaski. And our cross-country team is getting started on summer training.
For East, the city stadium automotive area is coming together. It will have small engines room, three televisions for instructional purposes, five stations for car repair complete with an iPad and laptop at each station. We also are going to have a computer room with 12 computers that are taking orders and conducting research for these students. And East has also had a successful summer instrumental boot camp at the East High Institute for Fine Arts. And as for West, the West students designed this summer and painted a beautiful, beautiful mural for Los Bandidos East. We will stay tuned for the information on the, on really, a really ceremony in a few weeks. Also, for upcoming events for InterCity Student Council, we'll soon get together and get ready for the upcoming school year as we're going to, really excited to see how InterCity Student Council will go this year. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Julie. Next, we have our Legislative Liaison Report, and I'll turn that over to Mike.
Thank you, Brenda. Reduce state funding for K-12 public schools. Reduce state funding for the University of Wisconsin system. $400 million in public money, including interest, for a new arena for a professional basketball team owned by billionaires. It's unfortunate that the governor and the majority of the state legislature don't realize or choose to ignore the fact that a vibrant pre-K-16 public education system is more critical to a state's economic vitality than a new basketball arena. But that's where we are in Wisconsin in 2015. I'm going to summarize the key elements in the 2015-17 state budget signed by the governor affecting our school district, and then Michelle will address where we go from here. There are two attachments to my report on Neptune. One is a letter from WSB to the governor asking him to veto certain provisions affecting public education. The School Administrators Alliance and State Superintendent Tony Evers made similar requests. The second attachment is a story in the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, which details the K-12 vetoes made by the governor. And if you've read that, as you can see, he ignored most of the requests made by WSB, SAA, and Tony Evers. Late last week, WSB put together a 30-page document, which details in chart form what DPI had requested in its budget, what the governor included in his budget, what the Joint Finance Committee and Legislature included, and finally, what WSB's position is. And Sandy can email this to board members and you if you wish, but it gives you a great breakdown of every educational issue affecting K-12 in the budget.
Would you do that for Sandy?
Thank you.
First, I'd like to acknowledge three legislators from our area who have been strong supporters of public education, and each of them voted against the budget. Senators Rob Coles and Dave Hansen and Representative Eric Gendrick. Coles and Hansen also voted against the $250 million public funding for the Bucks Arena, which grows to $400 million with interest. That bill has not yet reached the State Assembly. First state funding. The legislature restored the $150 per pupil categorical aid funding that the governor had eliminated in the first year of the budget. Without that, our district would have been facing a loss of about 3.3 million. There is a $100 per student increase in categorical aid for the second year of the budget, which represents about a 1% increase. But here's a critical point. There is no increase in either year of the budget in the revenue limit, and that is the first time that the revenue limit has been frozen in both years of the state budget since it was implemented in 1993, 1994. The public may be aware of preliminary state aid figures released by the State Department of Public Instruction that showed Green Bay this year getting additional $4 million in state aid. What a windfall, correct? Wrong. Without any increase in the revenue limit, all that money goes into property tax relief. Not one penny of that goes into the classroom, as Lori correctly pointed out in a front-page Press Gazette story last week. Now, as an elected official, I'm all for property tax relief, but you can't starve our classrooms year after year without doing significant damage. Vouchers. Last year, the statewide voucher program was capped at 1,000 students. 1,000 students. This fall, private religious schools will be limited to receiving 1% of each district's enrollment as potential voucher recipients. For Green Bay, that's about 220 students. After this year, the cap will increase by one percentage point each year until it reaches 10%, then the cap will be lifted. This year, the state spends $212 million providing private and religious school vouchers. In the statewide program, about 75% of those are going to students already attending those schools. The Legislative Fiscal Bureau estimates conservatively that in the next 10 years, taxpayers will fork over between $600 million and $800 million in voucher money. Now, if that isn't bad enough news, here's another. Current law governing statewide vouchers said schools could only qualify for the voucher program if they were in existence prior to May of 2013. That was to protect against five-by-night operators from opening a school, grabbing voucher money, then going out of business, stranding hundreds of children. And that has happened repeatedly over the past 20 years in Milwaukee public schools. The legislature has removed that qualifier. And I'd like to read from a letter. Let me, I'll get to that later after Michelle done. I wanted to read from a letter that John Ashley had sent to the legislature regarding vouchers. I'll get to that when, when Michelle is talking. Next one is special education vouchers. Starting in 2016-17, special education students transferring to a private or religious school would get $12,000 from their public school. There is no income eligibility for this program. The legislature had included a provision that outside researchers with experience evaluating school choice programs would evaluate the new special needs voucher program. The governor vetoed that language. Accountability. Finally, some good news. The legislature changed the governor's A through F report card grading syst-- excuse me, system to a five-star rating system. Other points regarding accountability. There will be no report cards for the 2014-15 school year. The DPI is being prohibited from mandating any school district tailor its curriculum to the common core. The Smarter Balanced Assessment, or the Badger Exam, has been eliminated, and the Department of Public Instruction has been directed to seek a waiver from the U.S. Department of Education, so schools will be free to choose from among three to five different assessments. Civics tests, which we've talked about before, that will be required of all students to graduate starting in the 2016-17 school year. The PALS assessment has been eliminated, and school districts will be free to choose their own screener, although there is concern over sufficient state funding of alternate screeners. The Milwaukee Public School takeover bill. The county executive Milwaukee will be empowered to hire a commissioner who could take over control of certain low-performing Milwaukee public schools. First couple of years, it would be three schools. Every year after that, it would be up to five schools, that this commissioner would operate independently of the Milwaukee Public School Board. And language in this provision could, down the road, affect school districts with more than 15,000 students, namely, Green Bay, Madison, and Racine. Now, that's my summary. I would suggest board members hold any questions until after Michelle is done, because I think some of what she's going to be talking about may answer your questions. So, Michelle, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. You know, our mission is to educate every child to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world. And the work that we've been doing in the district at every level, engaging our community partners and sharing our story, is a very different kind of result than what we sometimes are hearing that legislators are legislating to. As one legislator said to me, "We must legislate to the lowest common denominator." I feel that the work, as we create pathways for each individual student's success focused on their individual needs to ensure that they have the skills and opportunities that should be afforded and deserving of them, is really threatened by this budget. And I would offer that we have, in the next two years, the opportunity, but also the challenge, to really sit down with our local legislators and have those conversations about the vision. What is the vision for K-16 public education in the state of Wisconsin? We are continuously working with our business community in partnership to create a vibrant workforce. Achieve Brown County is all focused on cradle-to-career efforts to close the gap and move our, our community forward in a way like never before, and many, many of the pieces and policies that we see in this previous budget, or the budget that just was passed, don't support our work. We've had conversations with legislators, but I think it is, it is our, I would say, from where I sit, in my own heart, is a moral and ethical responsibility to ensure that every child, every day, has what they need. And when I see a budget like this, I have grave, grave concerns. So, as far as next steps, we have an opportunity. Some of this will move more slowly than others. There are sunset dates and things down the road. The voucher situation is such, it's 1% this first year. But it's an opportunity now to really have those conversations with lawmakers, because the reality is, I have yet to find one that can articulate that vision. We have a vision. We have a mission. Every child, college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our, in our, in our world. And what I see in the budget doesn't align. It just simply does not match. We are a district moving forward. We are creating innovative pathways, so that students who leave us will be able to compete in the global economy that is the world in which we live. You heard from the young man who shared the letter this evening, and the young women who sit at the table tonight. These are the individual students, the students, student by student, every child, every day, who is most deserving. And I'm not sure that there is a clear vision that affords families and children the opportunity for success if we continue down this road. So, that's my personal takeaway. I think others join me in that, but we need to have those conversations, because it's clear to me not everyone recognizes, or can even articulate what that vision is for us in the state of Wisconsin.
Before I open it, I do have the letter that I referred to, and this is, it was written by John Ashley, Executive Director of the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, and this is the letter sent to the governor requesting vetoes on certain items. And I think, and this involving vouchers, independent charters, and I think this really puts us in the perspective where public schools are today. The WSB continues to be troubled by the seemingly, seeming priority and preference given to alternatives to our local public schools, especially considering the lack of evidence that they improve student achievement and educational outcome. In our view, it defies logic to assume the state can sustainably add thousands of new students to the private school voucher program, adding additional costs, without negatively impacting public school funding, especially when nearly 86% of new voucher recipients already attend private schools. We are deeply concerned that under this new funding mechanism, the role of local school boards will increasingly become one of raising property taxes to support students that are not educated in district schools. Students who will use publicly, public taxpayer subsidized payments to attend private schools that are not governed by locally-elected boards and are not required to operate transparently, such as holding public meetings or following most public record laws. We are equally troubled that the new funding method will mask the true cost of the voucher program by eliminating the separate state appropriation that funds new vouchers and instead washing the dollars used to fund vouchers through the aid formula for public schools. At a time when our state is having serious difficulty providing sustainable and predictable funding for the system of public schools the state is constitutionally mandated to support, we believe this proposal puts the state fully on the onwise fiscal path toward funding another system of publicly-funded but privately-operated voucher schools. This proposal is a radical change and deserves to be debated as separate legislation with an opportunity for public hearings and public input. We urge that it be vetoed from the budget bill, and as I mentioned, the School Administrators Alliance and Tony Evers made similar requests, and they were ignored. So, comments, questions from other board members?
Question about the accountability measure. How does a five-star rating system differ from A through F? I mean, five stars in A and one star's in F, right?
Right. At least, it, it doesn't, in my view, I think, in views of other, it doesn't carry the stigma. If you have one star or an F, it's, it's the same. I agree, it's the same, but it, it doesn't quite have the same stigma.
I mean, two-star movies can still grow three hundred million dollars.
Right.
That's how I look at it.
I dig that.
As a matter of fact, five-star movies sometimes don't grow seventy-five.
It's still a silly system, but it doesn't, it's not as much of a stigma.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I get what you're saying.
I thought movies too.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
I have a question about the funding from the appointed commissioner, so, in Milwaukee?
Yes.
So, how does that person actually get money to run those schools? So, basically, they say, "We're gonna, we're gonna, I'm gonna take Acme School and Widget School and Jones School," and all the money that goes with those schools, the board looks at the budget and says, "Here you go, here's the money for the schools."
You know, I don't know if I can answer that question on the funding. I know that the county executive will appoint a commissioner, and that person will operate, let's start with, he or she will pick from the list of the, the so-called failing MPS schools. That person will pick three schools initially, and then that person will be able to, now where that funding comes from, some comes from the state and from MPS taxpayers, similar to where it is now. I'm not, I haven't seen, I don't know if anyone else has seen...
So, does that mean that that person gets to fire teachers and principals?
They're really, that bill, and a lot of these proposals before the legislature votes on there are costed out by the Legislative Fiscal Bureau, and I haven't seen any paper on that costing out this proposal.
There are other states who, instead of doing what's happening in our state, are actually investing in, in children and, and public education, so. Then that's choice as well. So, but I think people need to, to see the whole picture.
So, what are you suggesting, Michelle? I agree with you. I would like to, I would like to hear what it is. I think you're right, Celeste, that there is, there is a vision, and I don't think they've got the guts to say what that is at this point. I think it's there. I think you don't have to be a genius to read between the lines what it is when you see this. So, where do we go from here, then, as far as holding people, speak to the fire and say, "Where is the state vision?"
Well, I think we need to start having individual conversations and then start moving it to a broader conversation. I think parents and taxpayers deserve to know, and I would be remiss if, if we didn't say this out loud.
No, I think we need to hold them accountable for what they voted in.
Right. Just, I mean, there are a number of things that, that people need to hold them accountable for.
Someone's gonna slip up and say exactly what it is.
But then we'll...
Well, it's the Alec agenda. All you have to do is you go to Alec's website.
Yeah, yeah, but it's more than that. It's more than, it goes beyond Alec. I mean, that's part of it, but I think it goes beyond Alec.
But, but I think that's, I think we need to have that conversation as to how we, we bring this to light.
I think we're going where Indiana, Indiana was, Chris, you had mentioned that you talked to some folks from Indiana. Indiana started on this path about three years ago, and they're well on their way, and I think that's where we're going with, with the voucher.
Well, I, I would offer that if you look, a number of years ago, when I first started teaching, I was part of the National Coalition for Equity and Learning and spent some time in Louisiana, and public schools were not well-funded. And I would offer that that's, that's a place where you see a system that is not performing like we are in the state of Wisconsin. And I continue to question why we would want a system that looks like that, but again, I'm not a policymaker, but I think we should ask the questions and expect honest answers. Transparent answers.
Chris?
I appreciate Mr. Black and Superintendent Langenfield's comments. I think they've said so much there. It's hard to absorb all the nuances and problems that we have in front of us. I am originally from Indiana. I was always very proud of that state. To a certain degree, I still am. But, but they, as Mr. Black had mentioned, their school district, public school districts, they're starting to go down to two, because they're not getting the money. The money is getting siphoned off into other places. What I dislike about some of these voucher things going on, we, in our larger cities, we already have a problem with white flight. Say what you will, it's there, and we work with it as best we can to showcase what we can do. But with this voucher deal, I mean, you're basically paying people to flee. You're rewarding them for fleeing. And I, I still believe in a democracy, and this isn't creating a democracy, it's going the other way. I might also add that I, I'm so disappointed that our legislators, so many of them still carry water for the governor, who is carrying water for, in my opinion now, certain people of means and running for president. It's, it's not about truly analyzing, vetting out what's best for our kids and the future of Wisconsin, and to me, that's, well, disgusting.
So, how do we want to proceed? I, I'm with that. I think we need to come up with a game plan.
Well, I think there's been some, some discussions internally, probably, on, on broadening our outreach to, you know, beyond, Lori's done a great job with, you know, with her legislative updates with parents and... her legislative updates with parents and that, but I think we need to, to broaden, form some kind of a, you know, a community coalition and not just react around budget time, because then it's too late. I think we need an, an ongoing voice, an ongoing dialogue in this community, because I think, I think there's a lot of people in this community that don't realize really what, what's going on, what's going on with the budget. When legislators brag about, oh, all they're doing for public education, well, all they did is, they got us back to zero, but it really isn't zero. Because, first of all, two things. Number one, it doesn't factor in inflation. If you're at zero, and inflation is three percent, you're losing, plus there's forty-eight million dollars going out the back door for vouchers. So, we're not at zero. So, any legislator who brags about what they did for public education is simply misinformed or deliberately misinforming the public, because they didn't do anything for public education. Well, they did, but nothing very little positive for public education.
Not for two.
In this budget. Yeah. So, I mean, if you look for positives in the budget in public education, and, you know, I, I don't even wanna get started in the University of Wisconsin system. And that's a, that's awful as well.
Yeah, well.
That's why I refer, you referred to pre, pre-K-16 education. Legislators talk about the importance of economic development, and what is more important to economic development than a strong public school system?
I suppose it's giving a loan to a company that doesn't deserve one. So, perhaps that's economic development, instead of developing your public education.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, I think that's, that's where, that's where the vision is, is there.
Right.
It's, what's public no longer being public.
Right.
Well.
Sheldon?
So, we need, uh, strategy, a, I mean, I, I agree that when you, when you look at communities where things have changed in terms of public education, um, it's, it's in part because the school board, it really is also because of the members of the community saying, this, this is not good anymore, and really meaning it. And really, and I think we have, I think we have the, the makings of that here. So, that seems to me, at least in part, to be the direction.
What would the board like, some recommendations for future action? Michelle, what thoughts?
You know, I think that, this is, this was eye-opening that, for me personally, that our legislature continues year-round. Having come from a state where they shuttered down at the end of May, and people take a break, regroup, rethink, retool, and, and really look at what just happened. That doesn't happen here. So, I think that, I think now, there's all, you know, there's, there are people working, but I think we, it would be hubris to sit down and, and really think about a planful way to start engaging more people in the conversation to understand just what just happened. I mean, I think so much moved so quickly, and as, as you heard tonight, there's just so much.
Right.
That moved.
Right.
And so, then, what does it really mean? I think for, for a lot of it, we won't know for a while, in terms of what the consequences will be. Some things will be more readily apparent, depending upon which school district you're in.
Right.
You know, in terms of finance and so forth, knowing that some of my colleagues are in districts that are about one, one or two years away from not having any resource. So, you know, those kinds of things, I, I just think we have to be.
Yeah, there are many small school districts in Wisconsin that are just right on the edge. I mean, we're fortunate, I think we're a very economically viable and stable school district, even a lot of things certainly hurt. But there are a lot of especially small rural school districts that, if this continues much longer, they just can't afford to operate anymore. I mean, they've cut their teaching staffs in half, they've eliminated librarians and guidance counselors, and how much, how much longer can you do stuff like that? So, it's, and, 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 and the way it is done, without public hearings, in the middle of the night, you have a seven or eight-hour closed caucus, they come back, here it is, and, you know, the minority party then voices objections, and they're overruled, and then, then it's passed, and here we go.
So, I think what probably, it makes sense, Mike, is that it's, you know, we can, we can frame a, to move forward and, and have a conversation and bring it back.
Okay.
And say, here are some things that we can strategize around. I know that, obviously, the WSB is doing something, and that would be probably a good lead organization to, to look to, since it's the Board of Education, and, and go from there. And I know SAA.
SAA is also.
The membership.
School administrator. It's, it's a gathering of superintendents and principals and business officials.
Right.
And I know SAA and WSB have worked very closely in their lobbying, and they talk all the time, so it's, as opposed to, I think, sometime in the past, superintendent of school boards didn't, always, weren't always on the same page, but I think there's a realization that this is a leadership team and can't be working at cross purposes.
Right. So, I think they'll have some, once the dust settles in a day or two, and I know that the Department of Public Instruction just shared some things out too, so, go from there.
If I may add, I, I think, beyond looking at just educational issues, and we're obviously focused on that, it's a primary concern, you also have to advocate or push for changes in, in the process on how the budget's created, where we can, how the gerrymandering that's done in the state. All those issues like that are what led to the, helped lead to it. So, we also have to be cognizant of anything we can do in those areas to push the system.
Well, and I, and I think that, you know, it's very hard for people to understand, you know, the, the, every ten years rewriting of the districts.
Or redistricting of the gerrymandering.
Yes, I think that's not, but I think.
Wisconsin is the most gerrymandered state in the United States.
Interesting. But I think that what people can grasp is late-night decisions, putting policy into what is supposed to be a budget document.
Right.
Um, trying to do away with open records.
Open, right.
I mean, you know, and all the people, POCs in all your houses, all the people who voted for that. So, I think that that's something that, that, that people who don't always pay attention to the ins and outs of, of legislation, I think they can gra, and, you know, people in Wisconsin don't like that. They don't like that kind of backroom dealing. And, um, I think if there were people in our community who really made a big deal out of it, there'd be some reckoning. Yeah. Because that's, because Chris is right. It's not just our budget and all the other things, it's the way that it was done. And quite frankly, the governor, this governor is one of the most powerful, because he just has that light item veto in a way that other governors don't have.
Right. All right. I'm gonna just briefly touch on the second item there, and it's been updated since then, U.S. Senate defeats key Title I amendment. And that really was, there was an amendment, a vote last, last week. The amendment introduced by a Republican senator from South Carolina, when they're talking about Title I funding, the amendment said that Title I funding from a public school student, if that student leaves, that could follow him or her to a public or a private school. Can you imagine the problems that that would create? That amendment was defeated fifty-one to forty-five. Tammy Baldwin voted to defeat it, Ron Johnson voted to support it. Senator Baldwin is, is very powerful, because she sits on the Senate Education Committee. So, and then later in the week, I think it was Friday, the Senate voted on a bipartisan of eighty-one to seventeen to pass the, what they are now calling Every Child Achieves Act of two thousand and fifteen, which is a replacement for ESEA, No Child Left Behind. Actually, today, Dan Rossmiller sent a very detailed comparison to the Senate version and the House version that I can send to anybody who would like to see it, but it, I won't go into all those details, but, um, the Senate version is much preferable. The Senate version has been endorsed by the National School Board Association and the National Education Association, because they do not have that provision. The House version passed earlier this month, no Democrats in the House voted for it, it passed by about three or four votes. They have a provision in there that the Title I money follows a student to public school, to other public schools, not, it's not as bad as that, but it still creates a problem if our students transfer to another public school district, the Title I money would follow them. So, there, the next step is that there will be a conference committee forum to try to work out the differences between the Senate and the House versions.
And then how does the money, so let's say the student, let's say the student goes from Tank, which they have their Title I ducks in a row.
Right.
And that stu, that student moves to DePere. I don't even know any of the elementary schools in DePere. Yeah, school, elementary school in DePere, with no, you know, they don't have a lot of Title I students. So, what happens? What hap, what, then what happens to the services the student's supposed to get? I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that going to other schools is bad, but if there's not a process in place to spend that money wisely, I mean, am I going in the wrong direction here?
No, I'm not sure how that would work. I can't imagine it was very well thought out, because you, you pose a, you raise a real good scenario there. You take, you take a child who has a per pupil amount followed, or give, awarded him, not him, but, you know, per pupil amount assigned at Tank or any of the other elementary schools, you go to a non-Title I school, well, they don't have the Title I structure, they don't, yeah. So, now what are you going to do? And that's gonna put one heck of a burden on that school as well, for the three hundred and eighty-five dollars or whatever that they're gonna get, now what are you gonna do with that? I, I can't imagine anybody to be real, real in favor of, of saying, yeah, we'll take it.
But then.
A couple hundred bucks for it.
Right.
And then you have to report out on it.
Right.
Do you know how that would work, Michelle?
Well, I don't know if anyone thought far enough, and if the public school system would still have to provide the services.
They would just get the money?
They would just get the money.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't, I don't know that that's been vetted, well, we, we, we have situations right now where we're providing, public tax dollars are going for private and will be.
Kids who live in a, in a Title I eligible area, if they're going to a private school, the dollars will follow them there. But now, all of a sudden, these kids aren't in a Title, they don't live in a Title I eligible neighborhood, there's, there's no qualifications that, I don't know. It sounds pretty bizarre.
It sounds like it hasn't been well thought out, and that's why with a lot of this, the unintended consequences are, it's hard to know.
So, hopefully, the conference committee will, and the, I know the NSBA has been working very closely with senators on that, and they were very pleased that that amendment was defeated, because that, that was a, that was a key, key amendment to defeat. So, unless there's any more questions, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
I will say one good thing the governor's done.
What's that?
Race is be limited to seventy. I was on the road this past couple weeks, you know, bugging down to Chicago, three hours and twenty-five minutes, there you go.
There's the glass half full.
That's it.
I like that.
All right. Um, why don't we do district events, and then I would say, let's take a break, and before we start system reports? If that's okay?
Yep.
Sure.
All right. Are there any district events? We've already announced one, the Back to School Store, but any other district events? Anyone would like to announce?
I'm trying to think.
Oh, no. Well, it's not really a district event, never mind.
All right. Okay, seeing none? Then we will take a break and be back at, like, seven-twenty.
We have one action item, and I move that the advanced placement, United States History Resources, fifty-two thousand, five, ninety, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Lecca?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
That concludes her report. We didn't nearly need any of those five minutes. Good work. And Mr. Freeze has been waiting all night.
Oh, no. Thank you for being here. All right, next, we'll go to our organizational support, and that will be facilitated by Chris Wagner.
Thank you. We have several recommendations from our discussion last week. First one being that the student conduct and school buses slash vehicles policy four, four, three point two, and bus slash vehicle rider rules and disciplinary procedures rule, four, four, three point two rule, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Any questions, or we talked a lot about this last week? All right, Sandy?
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Lecca?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Next recommendation is that the sales and solicitations, uh, district property policy eight fifty, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Lecca?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Next is that the district endorsements policy, eight five three, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Lecca?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
And the next one is that the Boys and Girls Club of Green Bay be awarded to provide services for the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers, community-based after-school programs for Franklin Middle School, Jefferson, Fort Howard, Dance, Keller, and Nicolay Elementary Schools.
Second.
Sandy?
Wagner?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Lecca?
Aye.
Carried six zero, sorry.
Thank you. Next is that the YMCA of Green Bay be approved to provide services for the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers, community-based after-school programs for Howe, Doty, Eisenhower, Sullivan, and Tank Elementary Schools.
Second.
Sandy?
Lecca?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Jeffries?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Brenda, can I just, on these last two, do these, you know, I know we have to seek RFPs, because the, the law sheet, are these the current schools that those two organizations serve? Are there any changes?
There, there, there are no changes.
They're the same schools that they now serve?
They are the same schools.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And the next recommendation, the dollar figure is actually, that I will read, is less than what you have on your computer here. The recommendation is that the bid for replacement notebooks, desktops, and carts be awarded to camera corner connecting point at a bid of one million, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, as presented, be approved.
Um, okay. So, it says one point nine eight seven five four eight.
And it's one eight two four four three.
It's on your third sheet, it's on the bottom here.
Oh, so that means you need to change that motion.
Yes, we will.
He just did.
I just did.
He just read the motion that's as changed.
I read it with a correct figure. I say second.
Okay.
Wait, do we have, I don't think we have a second.
No, I, I'll second it.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Is there more?
Well, yeah, I mean, I think you have to actually make a motion to amend.
No, but he made the motion.
The motion to amend needs to be made, not, you can't just amend it on the fly.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he didn't.
He didn't make the original.
He didn't make the original motion.
The original motion was never made.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. It's less money anyway. It's less money anyway.[1742.61] It's less money anyway.
It's not really, it's not really in a.
I, I will, I will just, second.
Well, it's amended as presented in our.
But it was never made publicly, though. Never made publicly, so I don't think it has.
Okay.
Is that a question for her attorney? If we're concerned about.
Melissa, are we amending it, or is, as long as it was never introduced, it's not an amendment, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
So we're good. If I could, we have Chris Rugdon Hill, and we have John Otto here from our Technology Department, and they are here to present on behalf of Technology tonight to talk about our replacement devices, and they went through a pretty rigorous process, so they will proceed, and, and please feel free to ask questions of them. I know that you received the documentation identifying all of the different responses to their request for proposal. Dave Teetz was involved, as well as Diane Dersch in this process, and I'm sure a host of others. So I'm going to turn it over to the two of you, and, and we'll go from here.
So I'd like to start by sharing some background. Three years ago, the district made an investment in mini-computers or notebooks for student use in the classroom, and over the course of time, you know, the recent three years, our teachers have worked to integrate that technology into the instruction. In addition, the use of these computers helps our students prepare for a variety of online tests. The computers that were acquired three years ago were under a three-year lease, which is expiring, and these computers are in need of replacement. The expiration of the lease and the return of the devices has created a void in our classrooms, so we're looking to fill that void. We went through, collected a number of different computers, and put them through the same rigorous testing that we have used in recent years, and we determined that the HP ProBook 11 is the best choice for the district, the best value.
I have to tell you, I almost want you to drop it. I'm kind of only half kidding.
To test it?
I'm only half kidding.
But, but that's, that was part of the consideration.
That was the issue.
That is a part of the consideration, a part of the testing.
Yeah. So?
So we look at durability, we look at features and how.
Did you drop it? I'm actually really serious. This is what kids actually do, they actually drop them in the cafeteria. Did you drop it?
They, some of our student testers did.
Okay, good.
So.
Hopefully they didn't throw it, though. Just drop.
Just drop.
So you want the, the test, like the UTEC commercial with the testing the luggage and the Zoo.
San time.
You're Samsung.
Yeah.
Completely serious.
No, I understand what you're saying. Kid tested, mother approved.
Yes.
So where we, our goal was to replace a Windows computer with a similar Windows computer, so that combined with the Chromebooks we purchased last year, it would give a well-rounded learning experience for our students. So once we completed the testing and determined that this was going to be the best value for the district, we issued, through our purchasing department, we issued a request for proposal, and the bids were received and, and subsequently evaluated.
We evaluated the bids on our best value for the district. All, all bidders were asked to provide value-added features on their bids, so in addition to the unit cost, which you can see on, for the different bidders were pretty close, the camera corner connecting point came back with the best value added, where their proposal involved having them doing all the unboxing, imaging, warehousing, and delivery for a fee of $9 for each item. The best value with, when we balanced that against what we thought it would take for our staff to do it, it provided significant savings. In addition to that, and I think even more importantly, we didn't put a value on what that would do as far as getting the computers out to the school quicker, not in the student's hands quicker, and we didn't put a value on that, but we saw, also thought it was a very, very high value. So that's the reason we decided to go with camera corner connecting point.
And could you explain the no's? In there, when these people responded to our, these companies responded to our RFP, but there's a no, could you explain the why on that?
Yes, a couple of vendors, now, we had gone through rigorous testing to determine which device would best meet the needs of the district prior to sending out the request for proposal. There were a couple of vendors that, although we had specified a, the HP ProBook 11, and when asked, we said we would not accept substitutions, they submitted bids with a substitution computer, and so they were disqualified because they did not meet the requirements of the RFP.
Now, getting back to Ms. Jeffries' comment earlier, one of the things we looked for in this, in this computer was solid-state drive, which is far more rugged than a standard drive with moving parts.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Any other?
Anything else? Oh, I'm sorry, it's over to you, but thank you for your thoroughness with this.
Any other questions before we take a vote?
You have a question here on the, on the, on the first page here with the net value at, I understand the difference between the internal cost and deployment vendor cost, but should there be, should that be a negative 47,600, and if so, does that affect the other, is it added up, totaled up?
You know, Mr. Dorff, I looked at this about a dozen times, still trying to make sense in my head, and, and the bottom line was, it came to me, is that I had to make sure I was comparing apples on apples going all the way across. And that figure, whether, whether you put in minus 78 for the internal deployment costs or plus 78, has a direct impact on whether that turns out to be a minus or a plus 47. So the bottom line is, we compare equalized value going all the way across.
Okay.
Because they have nothing.
Do you have questions, Elsie?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right, Sandy.
Jeffries.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Lecca.
Aye.
Dorff.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Next recommendation is that the CISA VII contract for $545,960, as presented, be approved.
If I could offer.
Is there a second?
Second.
I, I'm going to invite Melissa Thiel-Caller, legal counsel, and Associate Superintendent Kim Paula to join us at the table. We've actually had a number of conversations about this budget to, to make sure, or contract to make sure that we're very clear on the additional cost to the district, and I think they can just share some insight with you. I know that you should have a copy of actually both the previous contract and the contract for 1516 as well.
So I think that probably the two biggest areas that you see an increase are around the NWTC Learning for Independence, which is for our transitional students, 18 through 21, and then also in the alternative school, high school costs. Both of those, we've really kind of started to dig in quite a bit lately, trying to look at even from the, what's our success rate in the programs, what's happening in those programs. I'll use the alternative schools as an example. Out of the 66 slots that exist with CISA, we use 64 of them. So the consortium that was started a number of years ago with the intent that other high schools would send students, really, their, their numbers are, are us, except for a school here or there. So we were really looking at, you know, what is our cost? Is this a program that we could probably bring back to the district and run ourselves? So we did meet with Mr. Dicker just last week to talk about, you know, what increase, why the increase. They originally proposed a 4% increase, and in the end, when we looked at everything, we, we got to a 2% increase, which is the average of what we can expect usually. If you look at what they've charged us over the last couple of years, there were some years where we had 0% increase, some years where we had 2, some where we had a 1.5. The increase this year in particular was for the technology that they had to purchase to upgrade the software for our students to be able to participate and have what they need. So in our mind, that 2% increase was reasonable, when we kind of broke everything down and itemized it. But we are looking at, is this a program that we should be taking back as a district and running here? And we have some plans to do that, and they're, they're good with that. The other program that's on here, the high one, the NWTC Learning for Independence, that indicates 35 students, but we may not use those 35 slots. So Claudia, and Brendan, and Melissa have been working with CISA to talk about how many slots we really need, what the increase is for, and we have a separate contract that actually exists outside of this contract that will define those dollars. So I would say that, that, that is pretty high compared to where we're probably going to land, but I think they're just trying to capture, if you had 35 slots, it's 2,900. It was 2,500, so there's a $400 per student increase. And that's what we're really digging into, trying to find out what's in that $400, why the increase. I think it's reasonable to expect an increase every once in a while, but what's the $400 mean?
Right.
So. There were a couple of things that were added to the contract from teaching and learning around curriculum and instruction, and then we are in our last year of the Autism Academy coming up, so that cost will come off, and we're looking at a train the trainer there, so we'll be able to eliminate that. So I guess overall, those explain kind of the big increases, but I think what we wanted to let you know is, we're, we are digging in, we're trying to make sure that when these increases come, we're not just rolling over and signing the next contract, and we've really made some traction on what does all of this mean, and what does it look like, and, you know, are these things that maybe we need to be doing on our own and get some programs started, so.
To.
I have the language here in the state budget regarding CISA's, and I guess, yeah, I'd ask you to react to what it says, and that formulates anything in our mind. The governor said, eliminate state aid of $260,600 each year for CISA's, allow school districts to withdraw from a CISA by adopting a resolution to do so, and then the legislature approved the governor's recommendation regarding state aid and allowing a district to withdraw from a CISA, but delete the provision specifying that each school board of a district participating in a CISA would pay its proportional share of the cost of the maintenance and operation of the Office of the Border Control and CISA Administrator, and would match any federal funds received by CISA for vocational education administration. Also, delete the provision requiring the Border Control to determine each district's proportional share of those costs. So what does that mean for us?
Can you say that again without looking at your sheet? I, you know, I think basically what that says to me, and Melissa can chime in, is that we're not required to be a member of the CISA, yet we would still be expected to pay for the administration of that CISA.
Right.
So I think, you know, if you look, that's the first item of $37,000, and we would still be expected to pay that, even if we don't belong. I think what, in, in my mind, we really are starting to look at that piece already of, what's the cost benefit for us to belong?
Yeah.
And are we real, I, I think the consortium, for example, was a great idea when it first started. I think there were other schools that needed, you know, to be able to come to the consortium. They've started their own programs now, and they, they don't have the need. So we could say, nope, we're not going to do that, but we still have to pay the administrative cost that we're expected to pay as our share.
Now, I know, CISA's are critical for, especially for smaller school districts that can't afford their own psychologists, social workers, some of these special education services. I think some smaller districts couldn't exist without CISA's. Other large districts like us, I mean, not so much. Is that a fair statement?
I, I think there are still certain areas that CISA provides us opportunities that we wouldn't be able, as a district, to probably do on our own, and I think, you know, the strength in a consortium is the strength of being able to network with others that are in that consortium. I think there are certain pieces, you know, like the examples that we gave tonight, that as a larger district, we could certainly do, and then get into an agreement with the other districts to have them work with us instead of the CISA, and it really comes down to some cost analysis and, you know, doing exactly what I think we're doing, starting to dig in and look at, you know, what can we do on our own, for maybe less.
Right.
I, I would also offer that you start to see CISA's across the state now really becoming focused on something. So CISA VI, for example, is the whole educator effectiveness piece, where they've gone from the teacher in the classroom to the administrator, the principal, you know, to the superintendent. So what we're seeing is some retooling. I know that CISA IX looks, VIII looks a little different as well. So I think they're honing in on some different areas of focus and expertise that I think will serve the state well. I know CISA I, for example, is the, the convener for, for Y's dash local that we're part of as well. So I think that they're retooling right now, too. So we're, we're all working together collectively on this, but we are evaluating what's in here and what maybe we could deliver more effectively, or perhaps the same and more efficiently, though, with taxpayer dollars.
And I think they're having to do the same. So in our conversation with Jeff, I'm sure he's thinking about, here, we're running this program, and most of the students are yours, and there's costs that we're probably incurring and maybe not capturing in a 2% increase. You know, is it worth their time to be doing that as well? So I think they're also looking at this piece, and I think we've been working together pretty well to kind of determine what those are.
Absolutely.
If I may, the, I think you said the figure was about $27,000 for new software, something like that.
Uh, yeah, there was an increase in the altern, in the learning for independence of about $26,000. There's an increase of about $7,000 this year for the alternative school that was due to the technology, but it was really just this year. They purchased about $60,000 worth of, of technology and software, and then they're trying to get that back through those yearly, it was like a five-year plan, but our conversation with them is, if we pick up the program, where does the technology sit? We're not going to pay for that $60,000 worth of technology and then not own the technology or the software. So this year, it's about a $7,000 increase, and I think that's where we dug in, we felt that was reasonable, based on what they purchased and how many kids are using it.
Be it good or bad, you read my mind.
Hmm?
Thank you.
All right, Sandy.
Lecca.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Dorff.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Jeffries.
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Thank you. Now we're going to Human Resources. First recommendation is that the employee handbook revisions, as presented, be approved.
Second. Since we met last week, there are no additional changes to this recommended motion, and again, it's to change the date from emeritus, when teachers would have to indicate that they would like to retire under emeritus from February 15th to January 31st each year, and then remove the compensatory time section from the handbook.
Any questions? Sandy.
Warren.
Aye.
Lecca.
Aye.
Jeffries.
Aye.
Maloney. Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Dorff.
Aye.
Carried six zero.
The only thing left are the consent items. That the consent items, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Sandy.
Jeffries.
Aye.
Maloney.
Aye.
Warren.
Aye.
Lecca.
Aye.
Dorff.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Dorff.
Aye.
Wagner.